Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting of September 18th, 2017. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bodiffel.
President.
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Centers is here. President Burton.
Here. We have a quorum. Mrs. Frank, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting, or voting meeting as some folks call it, of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education. Just a little note about what type of meeting this is. As we said, this is a regular or voting meeting. By that, we mean that we have discussed the topics at typically at least two prior meetings: a study session of the board where we go over a brief overview of upcoming items, and a committee of the whole, which is a very deep dive, typically lengthy discussion of the items that are before the board. Once the conversation and questions and answers have been exhausted and the board feels they're ready to go to a vote on the items, they come to a meeting such as tonight. Therefore, you will not see the length of discussion typically that you would or that you might expect. Please understand that that is because the discussion takes place during our Committee of the Whole meetings in great detail. And I really do encourage you to either attend or tune in at live or afterward on our website to the Committee of the Whole meetings if you're interested in lengthy discussion and a lot of detail about items that are coming before the board. Therefore, tonight's meeting may be a little bit briefer than you would expect, but that's just a little bit of background as to why. If you're looking for an agenda for this evening on your attendance here in the room, they can be found just outside the table, to the right outside the door. If you're watching from home, they can be found on our website. That website address is www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow along for the evening. First, the next item on our agenda this evening is Item 3 Communications. And 3A is our Bond Project Update Summer 2017. Mrs. Jenkins, welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, President Burton, members of the board, Superintendent Oakley. It's good to be back for another great start of another great school year. Tonight, it is my pleasure to present an overview of the summer bond projects that took place throughout the district while students and staff were out enjoying the beach. It's hard to believe that we've already completed Phase 4 of the 2013 bond issue that is bringing $195 million in improvements to our schools. We are so fortunate as a district to have received the support of the voters for this amazing opportunity to greatly improve the learning environments for our students while enhancing security, technology, and our neighborhoods throughout the community. During the -- excuse me. So I've got a slideshow that Fred will be showing on the TV monitors for our viewers at home. And we have a large monitor over in the corner here. So, there we go. During the summer months, construction projects ranged from the installation of additional lockers at Buchanan to the start of a massive renovation at Churchill High School and several projects in between, as you'll see. This year, the scope of the work was a bit different. Oh, thank you, Phil. Was a bit different from what we've seen in past summers with the school-by-school total renovation in past years. Two cornerstone projects this past summer were the completion of the Performing Arts Center at Stevenson High School and the start of the PAC at Churchill High School. Those cornerstone projects of the summer were complemented by smaller projects at six different buildings. At Garfield Community School, six classrooms were renovated with top-to-bottom improvements for the Great Start Readiness and Talk It Up preschool programs. Other projects took place at schools that received renovations in previous phases, but were still in need of some additional final touches. So there's an overview of the projects for -- that occurred over the summer. We have the Phase 2 of the Stevenson High School Performing Arts Center completion, the Phase 1 of Churchill High School's Performing Arts Center. Thank you. Phase 1 of Churchill High School's renovations, which included a main entrance renovation, offices, performing arts classrooms, projects, art rooms, the ASD classrooms, restrooms, and the cafeteria. As I mentioned, the 6 GSRP and Talk It Up classrooms at Garfield Community School, and a retouch of the projects from Phase 1 at Cooper and Frost, and a retouch of the projects from Phase 3 at Grant and Randolph. Okay, so with all that, we are making progress. We are already 2 million square feet into our renovations, which is just an amazing thing to think about. That's an awful lot of work we've had done so far from our bond. Seventeen schools have been completed. Two performing arts centers have been completed and still to come. Improvements at next summer include improvements at Webster, Buchanan, Jackson Center, and the Career Technical Center. In addition to that, we will be moving the Western Wayne Skill Center, as you know, from its current location on Ann Arbor Trail over to the Garfield Community School, and that will take place this coming winter. So sit back and enjoy the slideshow that I've prepared for you as a sort of a virtual tour through the summer 2017 bond projects. The completion of the Stevenson PAC is just wonderful. It is -- it takes your breath away when you're walking up to it. I went on a beautiful sunny day and took these photographs, and I just had to step back in awe. This project mirrors the PAC at Franklin, which opened at this time last year. It is a state-of-the-art new construction with approximately 30,000 square feet of theater adjacent -- theater and adjacent fine arts classroom and practice space. 550 seats, 2,500 lights, 194 tons of steel. 80,000 concrete blocks were used in this construction. It was designed by StanTech and constructed by the George W. Ott Company. So here are a few slides. During the construction, we all remember that painful phase, a little bit of demolition there, lots of mounds of dirt. The footings were going in maybe a year and a half ago, perhaps. The lobby takes shape here. On the left, you see the lobby is under construction. The center, I actually have a photo with a worker in it, which I was really impressed to see that was actually sent to me from the summertime. And the photo on the right is the finished lobby at the PAC. Moving inside, this is a view from the stage, obviously during construction. And this was taken just a few days ago. Beautiful, beautiful auditorium seating. This shot shows the advanced technology rigging and the lighting and sound panels on the top near the ceiling. I'm not sure about the technical terms there, but it looks pretty cool. It's a true showstopper. Okay, so we're planning a special open house and ribbon cutting on Monday, October 9th. The event will be an open house from 5:00 to 6:30 PM with the ribbon cutting taking place at 5:30, and we will see you all there. The community is invited to stop by and see this beautiful theater up close and enjoy some light refreshments and some student performances. One moment, my keyboard is frozen. Okay, so moving along on our tour, another very exciting project is the Performing Arts Center that's currently under construction at Churchill High School within the former footprint of the existing auditorium, with the exception of the roof, as you can see. The Churchill PAC will see a fall 2018 grand opening, and we can't wait for that. There are some pictures from over the summer, and it's -- the photo on the right is pretty indicative of the interior as we stand today as well. This was from a few days ago, interior. The stage would be on your right. The original brick wall from the original Churchill Auditorium is straight ahead. This summer also brought Phase 1 renovations to Churchill High School that included a new secured entrance, office relocations, new office furniture, arts classrooms, ASD classroom suite, two main hallways, completed with the ceilings, floors, and paint, restrooms, and drinking fountains. And we'll scroll through a couple of photos that I took just last week of this. Oh, there's another worker I caught. Is he at it? This is the soon-to-be new secured vestibule entrance. The Churchill main entry is moved over to the right, if you're looking at the building from Newburgh Road. And this is a secure vestibule entrance. Here's a shot from the inside, and you can see the double doors along the hallway. And then the shot on the right is from inside of the brand-new main office. Here's another shot of the main office. Isn't that beautiful? And this is kind of neat. This photo was offered to me from the summertime construction. This is the main hallway looking toward the main doors, the main entrance. So your counseling office and main office would be on your left. This is during, and this is after. What a difference. And this is the same hallway just turned facing south. And you'll notice the ceilings, the paint, the accent paint around the rim, the doorways and along the hallways. Huge, huge difference. Top-to-bottom classroom improvements were made in the arts rooms, the arts classrooms, two art classrooms, and also the music rooms and the dance studio. The improvements included new ceilings, lighting, flooring, air handling systems, paint, windows, and classroom technology. There's another art classroom. You'll notice the accent tile on the floor looks so neat. Here's the Kappa Dance Studio. Other improvements in this section of the school include restrooms and the drinking Cafeteria was renovated as well. New lighting, new air handling. I noticed new cafeteria tables with the stationary stools and paint, very bright. Moving along to C-Hall, we have the new autistic spectrum disorders program. I call it a classroom suite. It really is something to visit. This is the main classroom area. The photo on the right is a large motor skills room. If you go through the classroom and you turn left, this is all connected to an apartment. And this has everything that you'd find in a typical home. Your appliances, there are different pieces of furniture, and a restroom that's connected. It was beautiful. As you know, the former Garfield Elementary School is now the Garfield Community School, which houses the Great Start Readiness Program and the Talk It Up Program for our preschoolers. So far, six classrooms were completely renovated for these preschool programs, and I'll give you an example of a couple of these classrooms there. And those also received the top-to-bottom improvements, everything from the ceilings to the floors to the walls, air handling, window technology, whiteboards, and paint. I like that color paint that they chose for the accent wall in that room. The building will also, as I mentioned, be a home to the Western Wayne Skill Center as renovations are currently happening at the building to prepare for that program to move in. Okay, moving on, we'll see other improvements and finishing touches at some of the earlier phases from the bond work. At Frost, the photo on the left is the community room, and the community room just needed a little sprucing up with some paint around the soffits at the top, kind of gives it a warmer feeling. The doors were also painted. The photo on the right is an example of the drinking fountains that were tiled throughout the school. New casework in classrooms were needed at Frost, and the photo on the right is a renovation of the drafting room. It's my understanding that the old drafting room had cubicles, and they were all removed, and the full top-to-bottom classroom renovation took place there. Okay, we're still at Frost here with the cafeteria. Just some little tweaks in the cafeteria, some panels under the bulletin boards, which prevent the tables from damaging the walls when they bump, and the windows now open. Those are latch windows. Some paint was added. The stage floor was also refinished, and a new stage curtain was added. Also at Frost, the counseling office was expanded. I'm standing in the corner, taking the photo on the left. There was a wall that was removed there to open that counseling office up a little bit. In addition, the photo on the right has more of -- it's kind of a vestibule area for students with some cubicles there for privacy. Other finishing touches include the paint in the hallways with their colors, the striping. The doors were all repainted as well. Moving along to Randolph, which was a Phase 3 school, their learning lab, which was open. It was -- it resembled like a library area. It is now enclosed. You see the under-construction photo on the left, and the finished on the right. Randolph received some additional lockers, as did Buchanan and Grant. At Cooper, we had some final touches here with the striping in the hallways and some accent tiles on the floors. It's such a difference in those hallways, just really helped to brighten them up. The rubber baseboard molding is coming soon, I hear, in every hall at Cooper. In the main office at Cooper, we noticed the new paint on the far wall and some new casework. And the renovation of the teacher work area and clinic behind the main office, behind where you're looking there, that's still in progress. That's the photo on the left there. The teacher lounge at Cooper is also still in the works, but they have a whole lot of brand-new casing in there so far. We'll go back and check on them, check on their progress soon. Other finishing touches at Cooper include the walk-off carpeted areas inside each doorway to our entry, and their tiled drinking fountains. Next, we have elementary furniture that was also completed this phase of the bond. Furniture for these elementary schools are not only functional but quite adorable. These are the hokey stools, and they're all the rage from what I hear. The students can sit on them, and they, I guess they swivel a little bit. Let's see, the example of the seating on the right would be for your older students in the lower L, more of a traditional desk and chair. Here's another example of an alternative seating, a low-to-the-ground table, and this teacher provided these cool cushions, which are so cool, if students feel that they would like to sit on the floor while they're in class. And last but not least, here's another example of our seating for elementary, and this is obviously a group seating arrangement. And that concludes the highlights of the bond work from this summer. I hope you enjoyed seeing the photos, but please feel free to stop in at the schools and take some close-up looks for yourselves at these amazing improvements. Our schools have never looked so good, and we truly believe our students and staff are enjoying every update in every school. And guess what? We're not finished yet because we have Phase 5 coming up next summer. Do I have those listed? Yes. Phase 5 includes Phase 2 of the Churchill PAC, opening, grand opening for fall of 2018, improvements at Jackson Early Childhood Center, Webster Elementary, and Buchanan, and also at the Livonia Career Technical Center. We'd like to publicly thank our community once again for supporting and the funding for these improvements to our schools. And we'd like to thank the hundreds of contracted workers, school staff, and administration for bringing all of these improvements to our schools over the past four summers. Livonia Pride, don't forget, that's our hashtag, truly shines in each of our schools. This presentation is posted on the website under the District tab. If you scroll down to Bond, you'll see each summer's presentation from the past four summers. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board members or superintendent? Mr. Centers.
So, a lot of us have had the opportunity to go out to some curriculum nights and open houses, and the response from the community about the schools is just overwhelmingly positive, and everyone's just thrilled with the way they look, the practicality, the teachers, just the -- how everything's right at their fingertips, right? So I've heard some really positive things. And even the little things like the chairs, they were all up in the classroom, and they've got these rubber bumpers on the bottom so they don't fall off easily. And the floor is much easily cleaned, and it's just a lot of thought went into all these little things, and it really shows. So congratulations to our team and our staff and everyone who made this happen to date. It's -- it'll be great when everything's done, but so far, everything's amazing.
Absolutely. Comments from other board members?
It is -- it's incredible watching the many, many years of work come to fruition. As Mrs. Jenkins stated, but I just cannot let it go without stating again, thank you so much to our community members who supported a very generous bond in its providing building upgrades, security, technology, things that will service our students and our staff for many, many, many years. Also, while, like you said, while many of us were at the beach or on vacation or just at home in the air conditioning, there were hundreds of workers in our buildings without air conditioning in a really hot summer. Paul Terryill is here with us this evening, and there were countless folks, subcontractors in our buildings, and we thank them very much for working diligently to make sure all these renovations were ready before our students got back to school. Labor Day weekend was probably close to a 24/7 production to make sure the last finishes got put on. But thank you so very much to all those who have worked so very hard to make sure this is possible. And as Mr. Centers said, we're hearing raves about it in the buildings. It's exciting to see. Makes all the work worth it.
Any other comments? All right, thank you, Mrs. Jenkins. The next item on our agenda is Item 3B, District Update, from the superintendent. Mrs. Oakley.
Thank you, President Burton. Welcome to a new school year. This is our first official regular board meeting of the new year. We feel like we've been underway for quite a while, but I actually had to check back and make sure that this was actually our first regular board meeting of the year. Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, for putting together an outstanding presentation for us of the Phase 4 bond work. We are already underway on Phase 5. In fact, this evening, I think we've got three or four items on which the board will be voting as we plan for Phase 5. This will also include items such as playground improvements, site improvements, technology, and additional flexible furniture options. One of the things that Mrs. Jenkins shared with us this evening were some photos that highlighted some of the lower, the low-table seating options, some of the hokey stools that provide some movement for the flexible seating, alternative seating for students. We also have stand-up desks as an option in some of our upper-grade level classrooms. And so really, this bond has gone far beyond the renovations, which are significant, but also include many enhancements to our instructional equipment. We have, we are now at the secondary level, beginning to utilize all of the new science equipment. So there are many things that folks may not see but that our students and our staff see on a daily basis. So we're thrilled to have our students and staff back for the new school year. We are busy underway, as Mr. Centers shared. There are many open houses, curriculum nights, activity nights, fall athletics are certainly underway. And we want to thank just the great turnout we have seen of parents at our open house and curriculum night. These are those nights that staff plan many, many hours and prepare to share that information, and it always works best when we can work in partnership with the parents who have entrusted their children to us. So thank you for attending. I want to thank the LPS Education Foundation, especially our foundation board members and many LPS staff, who helped put on a pretty awesome back-to-school event in late August for our students. We had a huge turnout of over 1,000 attendees at our new location, Riley Upper Elementary School. There were lots of smiles, lots of bouncers, lots of pizza, lots of snow cones. So it was a great start to the school year. We were fortunate that the weather held out that day. It was a little dicey, but we were able to move forward with the event, and we appreciate everyone's work on that. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the role, as we begin the school year, of our PTAs in each school. You will see wonderful welcoming faces at, I believe, just about all of our open house and curriculum nights. Before you pass that table by, stop, say hello to the PTA member there who is giving you an opportunity to join the PTA and, more importantly, become part of the school community. As the largest advocacy group for children, I know firsthand, as an educator, as an administrator in this district, I relied so heavily on the great gifts of our PTA and the work and the volunteerism. We have many folks on this board who have sat or currently sit in that role, and so I encourage you to become a member of your child's PTA and to be an active and involved partner with us in your child's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Oakley, I don't normally do this, but you mentioned the playground, and a couple of us have gotten questions this week on playground. We covered it at our last meeting, but for those who may not have tuned in and who may have questions, can you just give a real brief overview of the playground equipment that's coming?
I will. And actually, I'm going to actually have Mr. Francis give us an update as well. I'll get us started, and then he can pick up from there because he is chairing our Playground Committee for the bond. But I can cover, we do have a number of schools where equipment was removed based on a study of all of our equipment and an assessment that was done last fall of every piece of equipment at every playground in the district. And we found that there were a number of pieces that required us to remove that equipment. One that was done, there were some schools that were left with less equipment than others. That's the topic to which I refer, correct?
Exactly.
And so what we had brought to the board, I believe about a month ago, three or four weeks ago, was a request to purchase some individual events or pieces of equipment that we're going to have installed this fall at four of our schools where we had the most equipment removed. From there, separate from that, we also have a Playground Committee that's hard at work and going to be making recommendations for significant site improvements at all of our K-6 schools. And I'll have Mr. Francis just give us a brief update on that committee's work and our plans to bring you recommendations this fall.
Yes, thank you. And the committee was working through last year, and we reconvened for the first time this school year last Friday. We're actually going to reconvene again Monday because we We're actually going to reconvene again Monday because we are, are actually out divvying up, uh, different tasks to do and then coming back to, to discuss with each other. The overall game plan, knowing that this fall is, it's like one of those construction projects where you say you have this short-term, um, difficulty for long-term improvements. We want to make sure that we have a full scope of, of each playground throughout the district of what would be, um, pieces to complete a full playground. So, some buildings have more equipment that was removed. It was older, it was deemed unsafe by a review that may have come out. Other buildings, most, maybe even nothing was removed from there. We'll have to review what they have and then make sure that new equipment comes in, um, in a proportionally fair way, not necessarily a perfectly equal way. If, if you know what, what I'm trying to describe there, you wouldn't necessarily, everybody getting brand new items. We're going to be getting new items. Every building will be touched, but it's not just playground equipment that you have to address. We're, we have to address where they might be going, if there's a, a need for moving a playground area at a building. If you do that, you have to start over on drainage because underneath all of that is actually underground drainage so that the water can seep away properly. Uh, we have to double-check all the areas that we currently have and, and shore up any drainage issues that might be there. So, there's some infrastructural pieces that we have to work on as well. But, um, the committee, like I said, we just met Friday. We're coming back together again a week from today and our plan is to work very diligently to get this board, um, some information in front of them this fall to be able to vote on items going district-wide. Uh, there's of course some things that are out of our control with regard to installation. Winter is coming, uh, and, and if frost laws get, get laid out at a certain time, we're dependent upon the, the state to lift those frost laws whenever they deem, based upon, um, the, the weather of the winter. But our plan is to have the recommendation to the board this fall so we can have a PO and have that out to whichever is the manufacturer or vendor and be sort of in the queue at the front of the line, so to speak metaphorically, for as soon as we're able to get to the items in the spring to have out crews to, to install them from the company. So, that's sort of our timeline, our, our general timeline.
Thank you.
Ask a question? I'm sorry, can I just ask a quick, quick question? Can you just talk about the, um, buildings that we closed and the equipment that's currently there? Um, because people ask, why can't we, what do we, can we take the equipment from our schools that have closed and put them into their, our other buildings? Can you address that?
Large structures, generally speaking, aren't, uh, appropriate to move. It's you, you, the way you would move them, you'd spend a large amount of money safely because remember, those are anchored into the ground. They're not the, the ones that people buy at a store for home and you lay them in your backyard. They, they are anchored in the ground. We would need a company to come, take them out, move them and sometimes you lose a little bit of the, um, stability of them by yanking them out of the ground. That can be a process in of itself. Plus, with the cost of it, oftentimes, much like if you look at a, a home and you say a certain percentage of the remodel, at that point, you just knock it down and start over. It's similar with this process. It's expensive enough to move and the potential for damage that you essentially just buy a new, new product and put it on.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And just a reminder that this is part of the planned, um, bond work and has been part of the budget since, uh, since the inception. Um, so, we do have that money set aside. Um, we do have a budget for that and we're excited to bring you, um, recommendations this fall.
And if I can just jump in, the committee's been working very hard. It's made up of, of, of teachers, administrators, special education administrators, um, our, our maintenance and, and grounds supervisors. And it's a very exciting committee to be a part of because of what we're planning and what we're looking at. And this is, these are purchases that are 20-year purchases. So, you don't want to, you don't want to rush it and as excited as we are to be looking at the items, we want to get it in there. I know that teachers, community members, parents, children want to get all the new items in there, but there's also a, a, a go slow to go fast type of, of, um, thing we've got going where you don't want to rush a major purchase like that and then we're left with whatever we get for the next two decades. So, we, we do, uh, ask for everyone's patience. I know it's a trying time this fall and some of the playgrounds, um, principals and staff are really, really pulling together and, and, you know, having smaller events coming on a few buildings. We are also bringing out, you know, balls and, and cones and setting up games, uh, uh, on, on the, uh, playgrounds at each building. Hopefully, we get through this fall for a long-term, exciting accomplishment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item on our agenda is item 3C, written communications. I do not have any written communications. Do any other board members have any that they've received they need to share? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is item 3D, audience communications. Audience communications is a time that our Board of Education sets aside to listen to members of our public, of our community. Understand that this is a ti- time very much designed to listen, uh, and any feedback that needs to come to individuals would come either in the content of the meeting that's scheduled tonight, or if it's not an item that's going to be covered tonight, that will be, uh, sent back in a written communication to the person, uh, in, who is requesting information. Uh, if it's an item that is under the purview of the board directly, uh, the response would come from the board. And the items that the board itself handles directly are the hiring and evaluation of the superintendent, the setting of policy for the district, and the long-term or strategic planning, long-term goals for the district. Uh, if the question or, uh, or item of concern falls in that area and a written, uh, written response is needed because it's not covered tonight, you would, your response would come from the Board of Education. If it's under a daily operations issue, which is most of the questions, uh, are most of the questions that come before the board, uh, your, uh, response would come from the appropriate administrator in that area. Uh, I do have one blue slip of an individual who'd like to participate in audience communications this evening. Uh, that is Mr. Christopher Lee. Uh, Mr. Lee, you can make your, your way to the podium. Also, uh, audience communications is, uh, limited to three minutes per person. Uh, we do ask that, uh, audience, that members of our community who are participating do honor that three-minute time limit. The reason for the three-minute time limit is so that we can be fair to all members of the community and have everyone have the same amount of, of time before the board and that we can also get our business done that we have set for us this evening. Uh, Mr. Lee, if you could state your name and your address, uh, for the, the record, that would be appreciated.
My name is Christopher Lee. I live at 367-97 Crystal. So, at the last meeting of the whole on September 11th, uh, Board Member Frank actually suggested that we're still assessing the efficacy of the I-Ready program within the district, especially since we're only in the second year of its use. In that vein, uh, I'd like to present to the board a policy paper from Johns Hopkins University, their Institute for Education Policy, which is being distributed now. Uh, the paper makes the case that independent, peer-reviewed research regarding the efficacy of adaptive formative assessment programs like I-Ready is very limited and that it's important for districts to understand precisely, number one, what research suggests about NWEA, MAP, and I-Ready, which are very similar programs. And two, where we have important unanswered questions that deserve peer-reviewed external research studies that are commensurate with widespread use of these assessments. Uh, I'd like, I'd like to ask the board to consider reaching out, potentially partnering with one of our three local Research One institutions in order to rigorously test the efficacy of I-Ready in Livonia. A partnership of this kind could very well help determine if the I-Ready program, relative to its costs, is, uh, effective at moving the needle on student success in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is an item that is going to be coming up, uh, for discussion later on in this evening's meeting, so I'm hopeful that your concerns will be addressed at that time. Thank you, Mr. Lee. The next item on our agenda is item 3E, response to prior audience communications. I do not have any responses at this time. The next item on our agenda is item four, our consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. Five A, meeting minutes of the regular meeting of August 21st, 2017. Five B, minutes of the closed session of August 21st, 2017. Five C, minutes of the special meeting of September 11th, 2017.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Are there questions or comments on any, uh, consent agenda items? Uh, as a matter of information for our public, uh, for, uh, in years past, we have included our bills for payment as part of our consent agenda. Recently, this board made the decision to not include those at, in our, uh, our regular voting meeting. Rather than doing that, is a ma- is a matter to make it more efficient for our staff and as a matter to make it more timely and easily accessible by our public. Those mi- those bills for payment, since they are, uh, not an, an item upon which the board votes to approve, but rather we vote to send them to our auditor, uh, those items can now be found under our transparency page. If you're interested in, in seeing the bills for payment, frankly, it's a lot easier place to find. Uh, rather than having to go to agendas for given meetings and knowing which meetings you're looking for, uh, the bills for payment can now be found on our website. If you go to the front page of the website, there is a, uh, budget and transparency logo that pops up immediately. Uh, if you click on the budget and transparency logo, you can find the bills for payment. Uh, this way, they can be more promptly accessible to the public. Uh, there's a permanent record and they are very, very easy to find for not only board members, uh, but members of our public also, just as a matter of information for folks. Are there any other comments or questions on, on bill, on, uh, consent agenda? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. I just wanted to clarify that even though we say bills for payment, these are actually bills which have already been paid.
That is correct. Thank you. Any other comments on the consent agenda? We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bu- uh, Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item six, instruction matters. Item six A is approval to purchase I-Ready assessments and instructional licenses. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to purchase the online adaptive assessment program, I-Ready Diagnostic Assessments for Math and Reading from Curriculum Associates at a cost of $74,520. The online target interventions, I-reading, I-Ready reading instruction at a cost of $36,000 and a site license for Emerson Middle School at a cost of $18,905. The total cost to purchase the diagnostic assessments, I-Ready reading instruction, and the school site license is $129,425.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. O'Brien, would you like to address this item for the board, please?
Yes, thank you, President Burton. Um, I would like to, um, recommend the purchase of I-Ready diagnostic and instructional licenses in both reading and mathematics. This is our second full year of using reading and math and our third year of math alone. Our first year, we just used mathematics. And as you recall, this, um, program was used in our Title I schools first. They were using it as a diagnostic to determine the needs of our most at-risk learners. Those administrators recommended to the district to look at purchasing this diagnostic for all students. Um, we utilize I-Ready to assess our elementary students three times a year. We analyze the results in order to determine what our students' needs are. This year, this, uh, the reading diagnostic will be used as an initial assessment to meet the requirements of the third grade reading bill. These assessments provide teachers with specific information about student strengths and weaknesses with grade level standards. The instructional licenses will be utilized bo- by both elementary and secondary students in order to provide them with instruction and practice in the areas identified, uh, from the diagnostic. This purchase includes at the elementary level, um, diagnostic math and reading licenses for all students, reading instructional licenses for, um, a percent of our K three students, 10%. Uh, these licenses are going to be divided between our K four schools to be, to provide additional tier-two and tier-three reading instruction, um, for our most struggling readers in first through third grade. At the secondary level, the diagnostic and instructional reading and math licenses will be used based on, um, requests from the secondary schools as a part of their student success plans that they submitted last spring. Emerson Middle School is requesting the district to purchase the I-Ready site license for administration to all their seventh and eighth grade students. This is actually a cost savings to the district because Emerson's plan included using I-Ready with a large number of students and it was less expensive to get the site license than to get the individual student licenses. And this was the only building that it worked out that way, that we could save that money by getting them, um, a site license. Although not a part of this purchase, we do, um, work with curriculum associates to provide professional development for our, um, staff utilizing the reports and the results of I-Ready. Um, this will be, again, our third year. We have I-Ready coaches in the building, so we work with them and provide them professional development and they go back and work with their buildings on, um, what they learned in the professional development. The funds to purchase the I-Ready assessments and instructional license are, um, through our academic services budget, but just a small portion of that. Um, we use the 31A at-risk grant, also the early literacy grant from the Michigan Department of Education and that window actually is open right now for us to reapply for, um, additional funds. So, I would expect that then we would be able to pay back from, uh, the general fund, our academic services budget, the additional amount. Um, so, that window is open right now and like Mrs. Jarvis said, the total cost for the purchases is $129,425.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from members of the board? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. O'Brien, I understand that, um, this is, um, the state of Michigan requires us to have a certain amount of testing for the children and, um, we have to meet their requirements and this is one of the require, one of the available, um, tests that the state will allow us to do. So, um, we have a choice of a couple different testing, but we have to invest in at least one of those to meet our state standards, right? So, it's not like this is like icing on the cake kind of thing. This money is going to be spent. We chose which one from the state of Michigan that we thought was going to be best for the district and we're moving forward with that. Am I, if anything I said incorrect?
No, you are correct. We are required to test students three times a year. There are initial and in-depth assessments listed by the state of Michigan and I-Ready is listed as an initial assessment. So, we meet, um, the law by already, we were already using I-Ready before it was identified and then our Fanta's and Pennella's are in-depth reading assessment that we use to support our students.
So, if we decided to, to move away from I-Ready, which we could or could not do, we would have to pick up different testing?
Correct. We would still need to assess our students, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Centers?
When you were talking about this being a tier-two or tier-three intervention, um, that is, can you tell me what some possible other interventions might be coupled with that?
Sure. So, tier one is, um, our core literacy instruction that all students receive. Tier two is students who might be slightly below grade level and have, um, they're below in either reading or math and they have some skill holes that maybe they need some extra support. A teacher, a classroom teacher provides tier-two instruction, um, at their small group table. They use the I-Ready diagnostic to determine what they need and they might be doing some small skill groups. It could be, um, in a Title I building and interventionist or a paraprofessional. It could be the EST who pulls additional, um, students to work with additionally. Typically, our tier-two and our tier-three is an additional reading lesson. 20 to 30 minutes, a lot of schools use the LLI program, but it's a leveled literacy, um, lesson with, uh, leveled book that is right on their instructional needs. But again, I, I-Ready also gives us additional skill holes that, based on the children's results, that a teacher or an interventionist could use to- results, that a teacher or an interventionist could use to work with them. Tier Three is just... They're even more behind and have stronger needs. So they might have more than one grade level below, or they might have reading and math. And so then their amount of intervention time would increase as, you know, their need is.
Sure. I think that's... Gives a good comprehensive picture. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from superintendent or members of the board? And again, this is one of the items that we certainly had a great deal of in-depth discussion at our committee of the whole meeting last week. Seeing no other comments or questions, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Business Matters. And Item 7A is the approval of construction manager for Garfield Renovations 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to appoint George W. Ock Company as construction manager for Garfield Community School Bond Project in the amount of $157,933, which includes construction manager costs and fees, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contract with the recommended contractor.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Francis, could you address this item for the board, please?
Absolutely. Thank you. On March 20th, 2017, proposals to complete the summer of 2017 and fall 2017 projects were received from the three construction manager firms providing services within the district during the time of the bonds. The bond team reviewed all three and found them to be very comparable in fees, staffing, and costs. Upon completion of the evaluations and after subsequent clarifications, discussions, and meetings, the bond team recommended that George W. Ock Company be retained for the fall 2017 work at Garfield Community School. In April 2017, the board had previously voted on an estimated cost for Ock's fall 2017 work, that amount of which was bundled with the summer 2017 fees. Now that we have more accurate construction costs for the fall 2017 project, we in turn have a more accurate fee cost for Ock as construction manager. For the sake of transparency, we're bringing this back for a board vote with the more accurate fees based upon the actual hard construction costs learned from the Garfield bid results.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from members of the board? Mr. Centers?
We've had a fairly long relationship with Ock. Can you briefly describe some of their work they've done with us?
You're stealing my write-up for a later one, but okay.
Oh.
Absolutely. We do... The district has a 20-plus-year history with Ock. They've been with us not only through this bond, the 2013 bond, working on some of our buildings, but it goes back for many, many years, renovations back at Garfield and Stevenson, things that were done in the '90s and the aughts. Ock and LPS have had a very longstanding relationship. That is true.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mr. Francis, thank you for your description, but just when I hear "more accurate," I don't want anyone to think that there was an inaccuracy, just like budgets, they're living documents. And we just have additional information, which gives us a better idea of what it's actually going to cost. So this is not because there was an inaccuracy or error, it's just that we have additional information to provide a more accurate budget.
Correct. To be more specific, when we came in March and the board voted in April, again, we bundled the CM fees from summer work, which was bid at that point, and we had hard construction costs. We bundled it with the fall work that's upcoming with the CM fees, which had not yet been bid. Our next agenda item will actually be the hard construction cost bids that we're going to bring to recommend. So we just have a much more accurate picture, working off of the estimated budget that we picked back in the spring to now having bids that have come through and we're recommending so we know our hard construction budget for this fall project. That's absolutely correct.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. And just to note, we are under budget, again, on even these fees, correct?
Correct. And the budget that we had set for it is based upon the estimate and their percentage. So we had made that estimate back in the spring, and we're coming right in on that spot, right in on budget and just under.
Thank you.
And when we get into the next agenda item, we're also on budget for the actual hard construction cost on it.
Comments or questions from other board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7B, Approval of Bid Results for Garfield Construction 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the construction project budgets for Garfield Community School in the amount of $1,820,950, which includes hard construction costs and the project contingency, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts with the recommended contractors on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Francis?
Sure. After receiving and reviewing approximately 70 bid proposals, working through budget implications and interviewing the listed firms, the bond team is recommending the firms listed in George W. Ock Company's award recommendation letter dated September 8, 2017, for contract award, as these firms were deemed to be the low responsible bidders in each designated area.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from the board? Again, this is an item of which we had lengthy discussion a week or so ago.
Yes. And to the point, just to get back to Mr. Johnson's question on the last one, the hard construction costs plus fees and contingency come in at slightly under $2 million. Specifically, it comes in at $1,978,883 all told, and there was a $2 million budget for the Garfield fall work. So as you said, right spot on.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Centers?
So this program is moving from what was the Western Wayne Skill Center to Garfield... What's... It was referred to as Garfield Elementary.
Garfield Community School.
Community School, yeah. Had they stayed at Western Wayne Skill Center, we would have had to made major financial investments in that building, correct?
That building is the only two-story building that the district has, and we had programs in. And just as a side note, which is a glaring issue, we have students with the most severe disabilities working out of a two-story building that we don't have anywhere else in the district. On top of that, just the structure and cost to bring that building that's on our betrayal up to the same standards that we have in our other buildings would have been much more than what we're putting into Garfield right now.
Thank you. I know not everyone follows it quite as closely as we do, so I just wanted to go back in time and revisit that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments or questions from other board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 7C, Approval of Environmental Consultant 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to appoint Arch Environmental Group as environmental consultant for the Garfield Community School Bond Project for a total cost of $27,500, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. The environmental consultant will assist the project team in managing the asbestos abatement and lead testing that's going to occur at Garfield. This includes developing bidding documents, project management, air monitoring, oversight of government regulations, et cetera. The bond team has been satisfied with the performance of Arch Environmental Group and is recommending re-engaging them for the Garfield abatement project.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 7D, Approval of Bid Results for Garfield Abatement 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation of the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve Building Decommissioning Services LLC, Warren, Michigan, for the Garfield Community School Abatement Project in the amount of $43,830, including abatement and contingency dollars, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Francis?
Thank you.
You're up again.
Bid proposals were received from four separate firms for the Garfield Abatement Project. These bids were reviewed to determine the budget implications, and interviews of bidders were held by members of the bond team. Building Decommissioned Services LLC was the low responsible bidder and is the bond team's recommended contractor for abatement work to be completed this fall at Garfield.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from members of the board? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. Mr. Francis, just for the sake of people who may just be tuning in for the first time, can you explain what you mean by the abatement?
It's asbestos abatement, removal in the proper manner of the asbestos that's located in the building. We've had to do this with all of our buildings. It's the first thing that occurs with the construction and renovation projects. The abatement contractor will go in and appropriately, properly remove the asbestos and the previous agenda item. Arch Environmental Group is the consultant for the district who then keeps an eye on that work to make sure that the contractor is in fact doing it correctly, and then also follows up with testing, environmental, et cetera, to make sure that everything is done properly and safely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Centers?
Along those lines, there are going to be children still in the building at Garfield. What types of measures are done to keep that separate so that there's no contamination?
Sure. The wing that the GSRP students are in is going to have its own enter and exit access points, a couple of them to the exterior. But with regard to the remainder of the building, there's construction walls built that are sealing off the two areas. So construction workers aren't in with the children, and the children aren't going in with the construction workers.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from members of the board or the superintendent?
So just to be clear, I know Mr. Francis said that at the beginning, there'll be no co-mingling at the entrance and exit points either during this point in time, and then those construction laws will be removed.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is Item 7E, Approval of Bid Results for Garfield Security 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to appoint Security Designs as the security firm for the Garfield Community School Bond Project at a cost of $12,037 plus $2,500 in contingency costs, for a total cost of $14,537, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Francis?
Yes, thank you. Security Designs is the current security firm related to the bond projects. The bond team has been very satisfied with their work, and we are recommending that Security Designs be re-engaged for the fall 2017 project at Garfield. It's not a very large project, but one that needs to be done with regard to the Aphones, buzzers, connections, and security alarming system.
Other comments or questions from members of the board? Mr. Francis, again, we had lengthy discussion last week about this item, but for the benefit of the public that may not have tuned in at that time, can you give us a little bit of an overview of the types of security pieces that we're purchasing?
Sure. Very similar, but just different scale from every other building that we've worked through in the district. This will be in the secure vestibule, we have the buzzers and the swipe cards for... So swipe cards are for employees, staff that have a name badge, and the card reader will read it and allow them access in the building. Visitors will come into a secure vestibule, and Security Designs will also be installing the buzzers or bells or doorbells or however you want to call it. It's called an Aphone system that sends a signal to the secretary or whoever's manning that station on the inside, and they can see them through a camera and buzz them in. This also has to do with the connections on the doors. So when the alarm is set at night, motion sensors, connections that if they are... That connection is broken, the alarm goes off. So this is the alarm, this is the access for door swipes, and also access for the public through security areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mr. Francis, this is covering the GSRP, so they'll have security prior to the rest of the building being renovated, correct?
Correct. They have two... Currently, there are two access points, interior, exterior access points for the GSRP program and the wing that they have. There's a swipe pad already at one of the doors, and we're having the firm install another swipe pad at the other door along with an Aphone. I'm using that term. That's again, the bell with the camera that you can be buzzed in, and the supervisor of GSRP in her office will be on the other end, the receiving end, of that Aphone buzz, and then they can see through a camera and allow them in. So... And of course, the connectors at the doors, et cetera, motion in the building, all the same security. When they work this fall, they'll put the rest of that in the portion that the Skill Center program will come to, but GSRP will also have those types of connections and security access to their exterior doors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Comments or questions from any other board members? Mrs. Frank?
Just to clarify, I think this is one of the things that the bond has touched that has made one of the biggest impacts on students in terms of security. Students don't know it, but the security of the students. And I think when you say "secure vestibule," correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Francis, but that means for anyone who's watching, as parents, your kid... When you allow somebody to come into the building, they're still in an area that's separate from the school. You're not buzz... People are not buzzing them in, and they have free access to the building, correct? Their secure vestibule means they come in, and then somebody has to direct them and allow them to go into the rest of the building. So even though somebody is buzzed in, there's still another layer that they have to get through before they actually get access to the buildings. And so I think that's a huge piece of our whole bond work and all that we're doing to make sure our kids are safe. And I think that that's such a beautiful thing that you and your team are working on. So is that correct about a secure?
That is correct. The secure vestibule is in... Can be found in all the schools that have gone through the first four phases, including Churchill, who, even though they're a two-year project, they have their secure vestibule, which we saw the pictures of earlier when Mrs. Jenkins had her presentation. You're absolutely right. If someone from the general public comes walking into one of our schools, they can enter into the secure vestibule, and they have one of two choices: buzz and be allowed in through the main office, not into the general portion of the building, or they can can turn and walk back out again. Those are pretty much the two places to go.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And Mrs. Frank, that the secure vestibule is one of the highlights of the bond as it was... As it was being explained to the community that I know parents were really, really thrilled about. We cannot protect against 100% of all threats in our schools, but we can do what we can, and this is certainly an enormous asset to Livonia Public Schools. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
President Burton.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7F, Approval of Construction Manager for Summer 2018 Renovations 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to appoint George W. Och Company as construction manager for Phase Five Summer 2018 Bond Projects, and authorize pre-construction services at a not-to-exceed amount of $55,520, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Francis.
Yes, thank you. Before I begin, I do want to clarify, because we have two construction manager items up this evening. The first one we spoke about earlier, which is actually our first letter A agenda item, is for this fall, the work at Garfield until Fall '17. The one that was just read is specifically for the summer of 2018 projects that are upcoming. So what we're asking the board to vote on is to name the construction manager company as well as authorize the pre-construction costs for them to be doing the work and all the planning moving up through this school year, getting ready for 2018 summer. Just to clarify for those at home. So based upon the long relationship between the district and the George W. Och Company, and the fact Och has performed admirably on the current bond projects, and the fact Och is the only one of three construction management firms with projects still under construction in the district, the bond team is recommending the George W. Och Company as the construction manager for the summer 2018 bond projects. Additionally, the bond team believes the continuity of staffing will bring additional efficiencies to projects. It is worth noting that Och has held its fee percentage steady throughout the bond work, requesting 1.8% in a market that would demand a higher percentage.
And that has been since 2013, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there comments or questions from other members of the board? Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mr. Francis, can you just talk a little bit about the not-to-exceed amount and how that works?
It's based upon personnel and man-hours. So they have their hourly rates and their estimated number of hours to be able to work on the pre-construction phase. So we have written in a not-to-exceed amount, so the total of the hours, et cetera.
So it could come in lower if they spent less hours?
Correct. Not to exceed the cap.
Unless something comes up that's part of the district issue, that their hours, they can't exceed that, and it won't cost us any more than the 55. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Comments or questions from any other board members or the superintendent? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
President Burton.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7G, Approval of Environmental Consultant for 2000... I'm sorry, for Summer 2018 Renovations 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to appoint Arch Environmental Group as environmental consultant for Summer 2018 Phase Five Bond Projects at Webster Elementary, Jackson Early Childhood Center, and the Livonia Courier Technical Center for a total cost of $88,500, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Francis.
Thank you. Once again, a clarification, just like the last one, that we spoke about environmental consultant previously in an agenda item that was specifically for Fall 2017 work at Garfield. This time, it is to be naming the environmental consultant for the Summer 2018 Phase Five Projects. Arch Environmental Group has been performing as the district's environmental consultant for bond projects at secondary schools since 2016. They are the current environmental consultant for the Churchill High School Bond Renovation Program, and the bond team has been satisfied with their performance... With the performance of Arch Environmental Group, and is recommending they be re-engaged as the environmental consultant for the Summer of 2018 bond work.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from the board or superintendent? Mr. Centers.
So previously, we were using two different environmental consultants, just because the total scope of work is very broad.
Correct. And now... We actually used three in total over the years. Arch, at this point, is the last one left in the size and scope of the programs left over that need an environmental consultant. It really doesn't warrant to have two. Other company that we discussed with was very happy to be working with Livonia Public Schools, completely understands that there's no reason to split this project for the Summer of '18, and thanked us very much for having a partnership that we do with them. So at this point, correct, one environmental consultant is enough, especially because one of the buildings next summer, we don't see a need for the environmental consultant being buccanean, because we don't see the need for that type of asbestos removal, seeing how it was recently renovated.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7H, Approval of Purchase Agreement for Clay Property. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve delegating to the superintendent or her designee the authority to enter into an offer to purchase real estate and execute said offer and any documents necessary and incidental to the sale with Infinity Homes Incorporated on behalf of an entity to be formed whereby Infinity Homes Incorporated, on behalf of an entity to be formed, has offered to purchase 10-plus acres of land located at 36900 Mallory Drive, Livonia, Michigan, also known as Clay, for a total of $1,225,000.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Francis.
I would like to have a statement with regard to HI and J, and just to have an opportunity to take us a little walk down memory lane of where we've been with this process, to bring those folks at home who maybe have not been following it, because it's been many, many months. So feel allow me, I'll read through that, and then that will... Then I'll get on to Clay. So I'd like to begin by stating that this and the following two agenda items, all having to do with the sale of school district-owned property, are the culmination of an extensive and in-depth process. After determining the proposed parcels of land and any buildings that may remain on them will no longer serve as useful educational purpose for the district, the board engaged Mr. Bill Bowman, real estate consultant, and his firm, Great Northern Consulting Group, to help guide the district through the process of selling them. Mr. Bowman began working with the district during the late fall of 2016 on this. Since that time, the district team has put out for bid a public request for proposals in the spring of 2017, interviewed all bidders on their housing development plans, and discussed with the board at several open meetings the results of those bids. Additionally, the board spent time in a previous committee meeting discussing the recommended purchasers' concept plans for each parcel. The board has also engaged legal counsel to negotiate the agreement to purchase real estate documents, and has reviewed those documents at last week's committee of the whole meeting. Tonight, the board will vote on three purchase agreements, all with the same purchaser, Infinity Homes Incorporated. So with regard to the Clay property, we're recommending the sale of approximately 10 acres of land, more commonly known as Clay, to Infinity Homes Incorporated in the amount of $1,225,000. Infinity Homes is proposing to build approximately 31 single-family homes on the site, which allows for some open space to remain on the land and in that subdivision. It is our recommendation that the board agree or move forward into this agreement with Infinity Homes. And just to clarify, the piece in the recommendation with the "on behalf of an entity to be formed" that's very common with organizations, they'll end up creating a LLC for this specific development parcel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions by members of the board or the superintendent? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. And, Mr. Francis, this will relate to all three. Knowing that these sales bring in a finite amount, these are not an ongoing income to the district. It's one shot per property. Do we have an idea as to in which years these will hit our bottom line?
We do have a timeline for due diligence for the purchaser, but as it's laid out, we can safely say, I'll jump forward a little bit, that Perrinville will be in this fiscal year. And our fiscal year, as a reminder to those at home, runs from July 1 to June 30, so we're talking by June of '18. Clay will also be in this fiscal. The Nankin and Skill Center properties, it's a combined sale, but they are two individual properties with their own, what's called a Sidwell number. We're estimating that it's very likely we get half of that money in fiscal '17, and half of that money... I'm sorry, fiscal '18, and half of that money in fiscal '19. And again, all one time, as you had mentioned.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Centers.
Mr. Centers. Going even a little further back, if people are kind of curious of why we're selling property, a few years back, we engaged the community through forums and offered opportunity for them to give feedback on stabilizing and growing our budget, and one of the top priorities to the community was actually the sale of property. We... Some people will ask us, you know, I'm sure everyone here gets, "Well, why aren't you selling Dickerson? Why aren't you selling some other properties?" There's been a lot of thought going into the future use and where the district may actually need properties going forward. There are some properties that we don't anticipate having that need, and those are the properties that are being sold, correct?
Correct.
And lastly, I think the one biggest fear I hear from the community is that... Not that single-family homes will be built, but something else. This company we've worked with before, and they are a family home builder, correct?
Correct. They are actually the same company that is building the Washington Park subdivision where Washington Elementary used to stand. This is what they do. This is all they do. They want to build homes. They want to be able to build homes and sell homes and develop it as such.
No Walmart there. It's going to be individual.
And as has been discussed, these pieces of land, the city doesn't even have them. They're zoned as residential. That would be a hurdle that any developer would have to get through the city if they wanted to pivot like that. But this company builds homes, condominiums, homes, but different things, but all for families. They're all residential.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mr. Francis, we had a long-time rental in that Clay building, is that correct?
That is correct.
Were we able to work with them to find them an alternate location?
We actually were able to, and they are up and running at the Large Circle in Clay Elementary, formerly Clay Elementary.
Cass.
Cass Elementary. Yep. So, you know. Sorry. Thank you, everybody. They're in... They're in the Large Circle at Cass, and they're up and running. They started in September.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Oakwest.
Thank you, President Burton. I think Mr. Centers and I were on the same wavelength. I just wanted to add to that and remind the community that as part of those budget forms that we held, which were really very impactful to our fiscal planning in this school district, we received recommendations for four primary avenues for revenue enhancement, and the sale of property was really at the top of that list. And certainly, as part of that process, the district looks very carefully at not only what parcels of land are open or where we have schools that are no longer utilized as part of our pre-K, post-secondary program, but also those where we do not foresee future use of that land. And the board has appropriately been very judicious in reviewing those recommendations from administration. Mr. Johnson, your question referred to when these funds would hit the general fund, and I think one of the follow-up questions that we often receive on that is, knowing that this... These are finite dollars. This is one-time revenue. We're very conscious of that as we budget those dollars. And so as part of our process, one of our three main focus areas and goals for the past two years has been stability in financial growth in our... The management of our funds and growing our fund equity. And so we are pleased to be bringing these recommendations forward this evening, because this is one of the ways, not only strongly supported by our community, but an appropriate way for us to be able to grow that fund equity and allow us to continue to maintain the outstanding programs and opportunities for our students, which really was the impetus for that study as we began.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. I was asked why we don't simply sell some land that we already have that's vacant as opposed to land that has a building on it. And although we recognize one-time revenue when we sell land, we do recognize some smaller reduction in expenses when we lose a building that otherwise we would be paying utilities and heat and maintenance on.
Other comments or questions? It has been touched on tonight already and discussed at great length in our many previous meetings, that this is intended to be used for housing. Not only is that the intention, but their housing plan as of right now is included in this motion. So that document is available if anyone is interested in it. If you want to go to our agenda, it's with our board packet. You can take a look at it for yourselves also. Granted, that also now needs to go... Any development plans would need to go to the city to make sure that they have given their stamp of approval. Not only is it zoned for residential right now, if anyone were to request a zoning other than residential, it would be clear to the city that we sold this land while we don't have ultimate control over that after we finish the closing on the sale. It would be clear to anyone on the city side, in the very unlikely event that they were to entertain something other than residential housing, that the intention of the Board of Education was that this be sold for houses. That would benefit both the city, because we are obviously in a landlocked situation with nearly all of our land that's available, having been built upon already, but also it brings other students into the district that would live in those homes, presumably. So it's... We have as much assurance as we can that this land will be built for housing, and we have absolutely no reasonable inclination that it would be used for anything other than that. Also, Mrs. Oakwest has discussed with the board in the past the fact that there are likely to be some community meetings that will be held for the communities that specifically are impacted by the new... By the sales of these properties and the potential new building that will be going on in those neighborhoods. When those meetings come up, the folks who live in that area would be contacted directly. The meetings would be certainly open to anybody who would like to attend, but usually it's the folks who are living right in that neighborhood who are most interested in some of the details. So if you are living in an area that's impacted by any one of the three land sales that are coming up on the vote for... For a vote this evening, keep an eye open, because we... The district will be contacting you when there's a community meeting, and if you'd like to attend, you're certainly welcome to do so. attend, you're certainly welcome to do so. Any other comments or questions by the superintendent or members of the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 7I, Approval of Purchase Agreement for Nankin Mills/Western Wayne Skill Center Property. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve, delegating to the superintendent or her designee the authority to enter into an office, I'm sorry, offer to purchase real estate and execute said offer and any documents necessary and incidental to the sale with Infinity Homes Inc. on behalf of an entity to be formed, whereby Infinity Homes, on behalf of the entity to be formed, has offered to purchase approximately 20.73 acres of land located at the northeast corner of Hubbard Road and Ann Arbor Trail and the northwest corner of Ritz and Ann Arbor Trail, Westland, Michigan, also known as Nankin Mills and Western Wayne Skill Center, for a total of $1,150,000.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Francis?
The, we are recommending the sale of just under 21 acres of land, more commonly known as Nankin Mills and the Western Wayne Skill Center, to Infinity Homes Incorporated in the amount of $1,150,000. Infinity Homes is proposing to build approximately 78 single-family homes on the site, which allows for some open space to remain on the land. This parcel of land was mentioned earlier regarding a half payment and then another remaining half payment, just to address that for the board and those at home. There is a land contract by our request as a win-win proposition with regard to the fact that the Skill Center is still there, but Nankin Mills is empty and could be developed quicker than the other side. So the land contract has nothing to do with financing, it has everything to do with timing. So we've come to an agreement that we will release the seven-plus acres known as Nankin to Infinity Homes. They can begin development for half the cost of the $1,150,000. And then, when the Skill Center has been raised and the land has been cleared, we can get the other half of that amount received from Infinity and turn that property over. So in the interim, they would not own that 13-plus acres. We would still own it, they could not develop it nor work on it without our permission. But the point is, they'd like to begin, we'd like to be able to get them to begin and get some of our money.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there questions or comments from members of the board or superintendent?
No, just a reminder that we will, did you, you mentioned that we would, earlier you mentioned that we would make the move of the Western Wayne Skill Center after the first of the year.
I did not, but it would be, it's scheduled for mid-January of 18.
Yes, and then we would go through the processes, as we've discussed previously, of raising the Western Wayne Skill Center and clearing that area in preparation for the builder to utilize that, as we would with Clay Elementary.
Any other questions or comments? The other benefit to doing the land contract, as Mr. Francis has very thoroughly explained to folks, is that it also minimizes the amount of time that that neighborhood is impacted by construction, because we're basically dovetailing, we're going to be taking down that, the Western Wayne Skill Center, as they are beginning the building already on the Nankin Mills portion of the property. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 7J, Approval of Purchase Agreement for Perrinville Property, Ann Arbor Trail and Farmington Road. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve delegating to the superintendent or her designee the authority to enter into an offer to purchase real estate and to execute said offer and any documents necessary incidental to the sale with Infinity Homes Inc. on behalf of an entity to be formed, whereby Infinity Homes Inc., on behalf of an entity to be formed, has offered to purchase 5.08 plus or minus acres of land located at 33344 Ann Arbor Trail, Westland, Michigan, also known as Perrinville, for a total of $325,000.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Francis?
We are recommending the sale of approximately five acres of land, more commonly known as Perrinville, to Infinity Homes Inc. in the amount of $325,000. Infinity Homes is proposing to build approximately 34 condominium housing units on the site, which allows for some landscaped open space to remain on the land. This is an empty parcel of land currently. The original building that was there has been moved to green mead last year, so there's no other work on the district's part that needs to be done at this location.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the board or superintendent? Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mr. Francis, I know there's, sometimes there's a little bit of confusion because we've got the old Perrinville and that. Could you just maybe remind us where the location is and what kind of quirkiness about that property is?
This is the island over on Farmington Road, Heinz Drive, and Ann Arbor Trail, and it's been completely empty of any structure for, how many months now would you say? That was sometime last, early, very early spring, I think is when they started moving, if my memory is correct.
They're still moving it, aren't they?
It is not the program that got moved into the former Adams Elementary, which was then called Perrinville. This has no effect on any special education programming or students. It's literally a vacant island that the district owns.
And when you talk about the building that was on it, can you just talk a little bit, that the building that we're talking about that was recently moved was a historic building?
Historic one-room schoolhouse that went over to, the city had taken it and put it onto green mead as a historical structure.
Moved that, and then the school building, LPS building that was there was raised many years ago, correct?
Yeah, and I couldn't even recall, but it hasn't been there in quite some time.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? And as has been mentioned, this is the only site where condominiums are planned to go in, like a townhouse-style condominium, something is, something similar to what's located at Six Mile and Farmington Road, if you're looking for an idea of what's going to be happening there. That land simply wouldn't be conducive to single-family individual homes as it would condos. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Just a final comment, and you touched on it, President Burton, that one of the other positives for our community are a couple of these parcels, are parcels of land that are just completely empty at this point, such as Nankin Mills and Perrinville, and then the other with schools that we will no longer be utilizing. But in that, instead of that, we will have over 100 new, brand-new, single-family homes added to the inventory in the Livonia Public Schools area in both Livonia and Westland, in addition to the 34 site condominiums at Perrinville. And so we are very excited, in many ways, not only the renovation of our schools, almost $200 million, in our bond renovations and projects, but also the infusion of some of these new homes, in addition to the 40-plus homes at Washington Park, add some additional rejuvenation and opportunities for families to come to the great city of Livonia and Westland and be part of Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 8, Personnel Matters. 8A is Teachers for Approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2017-2018 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. McDonald is not with us this evening. Mr. Francis, would you like to address this for the board?
Picture me with a full head of hair.
Yeah.
The individuals we're presenting to the board this evening are qualified to fill the positions and have been fully vetted. Through our extensive interview process, we are confident these teachers will perform at a high level and represent Livonia Public Schools in a manner that is consistent with our shared vision and collective commitments. The positions have each been included in the 2017-18 budget and are in an area of need. We're pleased to be recommending such a talented group of individuals and are excited to get them in front of our students. It is noteworthy that many of these teachers have prior experience in other districts and states. We're also recommending two individuals who were former LPS students and one former Golden Apple Award recipient.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from members of the board?
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Welcome aboard.
And for the benefit of the public, these folks have taken their classrooms over the last couple of weeks, so we are not looking at substitute teachers in these classes. These are folks who are in their classes and they're coming formal, or coming forward at this time for formal board approval. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Center says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations and welcome to our new staff members.
Absolutely.
Next item on our agenda is Item 8B, Teachers for Recall. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and recall to district employment as shared-time teachers for the 2017-18 school year. The persons listed on the attached document dated September 18, 2017.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mr. Francis, are you up on this one also?
I am.
There you go.
Following board authorization on June 5, 2017, to begin the recall procedure, the process was initiated. The attached document contains the names of 10 shared-time teachers who have been recalled. There are currently no shared-time teachers remaining on layoff. Shared-time positions are hourly teaching positions within the Livonia Educational Association. All of these positions are within the 2017-18 budget guidelines.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from members of the board?
Welcome back.
Yes, welcome back officially. Mrs. Oakley, for the benefit of the public, would you please give just a brief overview of what a shared-time teacher is?
I would be happy to. Our shared-time teachers provide instructional, instruction to students in our partnering private or parochial schools. And so we have agreements with a number of parochial schools in the area, and we provide nonessential classes, art, computers, music, et cetera, to those schools. We provide the services via our shared-time teachers. So they are our employees, and they teach onsite in our partner schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 8C, Teachers for Tenure. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and acknowledge that tenure status has been granted to the following teachers effective on the respective dates. Carla DeJack, October 15, 2017. Stephanie Gidley, September 21, 2017. Lori Nicolopoulos Johnson, September 24, 2017. Amy, and I apologize if I pronounce your name wrong, Pataraki, August 30, 2017, and Lynn Schultz, August 28, 2017.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. These teachers have successfully completed the district's requirements for probationary teachers, including years of service, evaluations, overall performance, as well as student growth. We've carefully reviewed all of the supporting documents, and based upon our review, as well as the recommendations of the building principals, these individuals have achieved tenure status with the Livonia Public Schools on the date listed.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board or the superintendent? Other than congratulations to these folks, it's a wonderful accomplishment. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 8D, Removal from Recall. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District remove the following teacher from any form of a recall list, thereby eliminating him from any rights to future employment, Robert Buckley.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. In accordance with provisions of the collective bargaining agreement with the Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Educational Association, rights of recall are terminated when an offer of recall is refused. One teacher was offered recall and refused. Subsequently, his employment with the Livonia Public Schools has been terminated.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the superintendent or the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 8E, Leaves of Absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the requests for a leave of absence as listed below. Jason Dello, September 5, 2017. Jessica Matheson, 2017-2018 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Francis?
Yes. You have before you the names of two employees requesting a leave for the 2017-2018 school year. This request is in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement, and I ask that you consider approval of said request for leave.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from, or comments from the superintendent or the Board of Education? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Center says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 8F, Resignations. This is something upon which the board does not need to vote, it is for informational purposes only. The next item on our agenda is Item 9, Hearing from Board Members. 9A is Approval for Board Members to Attend November 2017 MASB Conference and Classes. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve that board trustees take Michigan Association of School Boards MASB classes and/or attend the MASB Annual Leadership Conference in November 2017, as shown below, for a total cost of $1,511.
Support.
Mr. Sir, hold on just a moment, we're going to continue with the motion.
Oh.
Please.
Tammy Bonnefield, November, would you like me to read when she's taking the classes or just who's taking classes?
The entire motion, please.
Okay.
It needs to be read for the record. Thank you.
Tammy Bonnefield. November 10 through the 11th, Conference and CBA 381 Student Achievement, for a total cost of $473. Here in Bradford, CBA classes previously approved by the Board and paid. Colleen Burton, November 10, Conference, $190. Dan Centers, November 9 through 11, Conference and CBA 309, Current Trends in K-12 Technology, $473. Crystal Frank, November 9, Pre-Conference, Governor's 21st Century Education Report, $90. CBA classes previously approved by the Board and paid. Liz Jarvis, November 9 and 11, Conference, $195. Mark Johnson, November 9, Conference and CBA 309, Current Trends in K-12 Technology, $90.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Oakwood, would you like to address this item?
Thank you, President Burton. As you know, board members are encouraged to attend educational leadership and development workshops, conferences, and seminars, which will assist them in the performance of their duties. Our board has certainly taken that responsibility to heart and taken it very seriously. Our board has just proudly participated in numerous MASB conferences and CBA classes. And per our board policy, BBBC, expenditures of this nature do require board approval. And we also like the opportunity to acknowledge the efforts and the time put forth by our board to participate in this very important professional development.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from other members of the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
President Burton.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 9B, Hearing from Board Members. As has become customary with our board, rather than having seven folks repeat many of the same comments to the public, we have designated one person to take care of a lot of those comments on behalf of the Board of Education. Tonight, that will be Mrs. Bonnefield. After Mrs. Bon... I'm sorry. Yes, after Mrs. Bonnefield's comments. If there are other members of the board who would like to contribute any other comments, you are certainly more than welcome to do so. Mrs. Bonnefield.
Thank you, President Burton. I just want to say, welcome back to everyone, students, staff, administrators, parents. We're all back well into the swing of things. We've had a lot of after-school activities. Football games have already started, which I only know because my son's in marching band, so marching band season is in full swing. And there have already been some weekend activities and night and weekend, evening activities, so things are really going strong already. I want to just mention the corn roast yesterday. We had, was first, hopefully, what's going to be an annual corn roast over at the YMCA to welcome new members into our community. It was the idea of several of our community members, and it was an amazing turnout, especially the community groups. And I want to say that LPS was way represented there. We had some honorary corn distributors. They were passing out the corn. Several of us were there with other service groups. We had the LPS Foundation there, so probably missing some of the other... Oh, the warrior or the robotics team was there. So LPS was very well represented for anyone that was new that came to the corn roast for the community, and that was just fantastic to see. And plus, it was a great turnout at the community as well that came. So that was a really nice day, and we had some great weather. I just want to say, I don't know what to say about the bomb project. It's just crazy stuff, and it's going really well. Everybody pitched in. We've already talked about everybody scurrying around on Labor Day weekend to make sure that our kids are in, they're safe, and they're comfortable. There may be a few items left on the punch list, but for all intent and purposes, the kids probably aren't going to notice too much of that. And thank you to everyone for... I know sometimes we're going through growing pains, and we've talked about the playground equipment and some of the other stuff. And again, you know, I think we've asked, said, just be patient. It's coming. There's a little bit of a time, you know, that it takes to get these things in process, but the administration, staff and administration, you wouldn't believe how much time and effort and just work that goes into making all these decisions. There is nothing that happens in the district that is a knee-jerk reaction. And so the process, yes, takes a little bit longer than maybe we'd like, but as Mr. Francis said, a lot of these decisions that we're making are, you know, 20-year decisions, 30-year decisions. And so a lot of time and effort goes into making sure that they accommodate the most that we can. Let's see. I just want to say I'm really psyched about the MASP conference because I think that we're getting pretty close.
It's our last year.
Pretty close to being an honor board. So I think January is when we do the presentation, the MASP does presentations of awards. So that is going to be really exciting for us. It's been many, many, many years before we've had the opportunity to have all of our board members as MASP certified. And several of the board members are also well beyond their initial certification. But to achieve this, all board members have to be on the first-level certified. And I think it's just great that we've put in the time and the effort. We do this all on our own personal time and make the effort and enjoy it and talk about it and bring it back. And it's not just individual knowledge. We share that. And I have to say, when we go to these things and talk to people, it is no secret that Livonia... I'm going to give us a little thing, a little shout-out. You know, people really are impressed on how we operate, how the district runs, what a great partnership that the Board of Education and the superintendent and the administration have, and just how well things work and how we're able to work together. We may not always agree, but when we don't, we always hash it out and come back to the table, a lot of times with better ideas than we started with. And it just, it's a great partnership, and I think just the way we work together is amazing. So that's it for me. And so if anybody else wants to chime in.
Thank you. Are there comments by other board members? Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I would like to remind our kindergarten parents in our district to heed the call that's been coming out to you at curriculum night, to sign up for the Competitive Edge College Savings Program. This is a program that's offered by the LPS Education Foundation, and it represents free money for you and for your student when they graduate from an LPS high school. The Competitive Edge starts with $100, put in a 529 account, and when your child graduates, that money will have grown and will be available for their use, whether it be books or any other legitimate secondary education expense. The Education Foundation does this for two reasons. They do it firstly to say thank you, because you could have chosen anywhere, and you chose Livonia Public Schools. We're excited about that. The other reason that we do that is because the foundation, and indeed everyone at this table, believes that going through Livonia Public Schools from kindergarten through graduation will make a student ready for either career or college success. And we believe that so much that we're willing to put our money where our mouth is. I encourage you to take us up on the offer. Free money, I mean, who wouldn't?
Mr. Johnson, what's the catch?
There is no catch. You stole my line.
Are there comments from other board members? Just a couple of things I'd like to bring forward. Someone contacted me, a member of our community contacted me this week and said she had a concern, and she didn't know where to begin with it. She didn't know who to address. I would like to encourage folks, especially at the beginning of the school year, we're getting the little bugs out of busing routes and the little bugs out of the new systems of... It does occur typically at the beginning of each school year. Whenever you have a concern, be it now or later in the year, I encourage you to take your concern to the person who's closest to being able to solve your problem, which is generally, if it's a concern of something that's happening in your child's classroom, go directly to your child's teacher. If that is a concern that affects your entire school building, go to your principal. If you do not meet success going that route, certainly contact the administration office and the Director of Secondary Education for middle school or high school, or the Director of Elementary Education would be able to help you. Names, phone numbers, and photographs of all those folks are on our website. Certainly, you're welcome to come to the Board of Education at any time, but more likely than not, your problem can be solved much quicker and with much greater success if you take it right to the source of the person who can help you. That's just a little tip that we learned along the way. The other comment I'd like to make is open houses and curriculum nights. Many have occurred already. There are still a handful out there that are yet to occur. I encourage you to take advantage of those. Get into the schools, meet your child's teacher or teachers, take advantage of any of these nights that are coming up. They're going to be coming up a little bit later in the year for some of our higher grades. Take a look at the facilities. And again, thank you so much to the community that has so generously supported amazing improvements in our facilities for our students. But do take advantage of getting into our buildings at any time. Our senior citizens typically have free admission to any of our sporting events or plays, concerts, et cetera, throughout the year. We encourage you to take advantage of that. Come and see what the young folks in our community are doing. It's pretty amazing. Any other comments from any other board members this evening? No? Seeing none, we are at the end of our agenda. We are now adjourned. I wish you a wonderful week. Thank you very much.